I call this meeting the Mayakin County Board of Commissioners and Commissioners. Thank you for being here. This is a continuation of our meeting last Monday, project.
Yeah, Monday the 20th.
To consider any other business coming forward in specifically to discuss the budget. So we don't have all the upfront plans which we share with you today. Anybody that would like to speak to the board that did not get a chance to talk about that? Bobby, what do you want to say? Anything? You want to keep the meeting as short as possible.
Fifteen minutes.
Anybody else?
Over?
Yeah, I will make an announcement. I got a text message from Brittany Burns.
I got one.
And she said, "I will not be at the meeting because I'm at the hospital having a baby." What excuse is that? We've been waiting for you and I, why do you want to have it now? So we congratulate her and I told her to enjoy the experience and let us know.
Only practice.
She's having her baby out of her feet today. Is that in silver?
I think we should recess the meeting and have it over there.
Does any board member have a yada after the agenda before we proceed? Although we've got one yada on the agenda at the last meeting we didn't bring back up. Also, I have a letter from the Southwestern Commission. There's a region aging advisory council made up of three members from each of the seven western counties. And I'd like to add that to the agenda we need to reappoint. Those of you that everybody's got a copy of that can be able to add that. And then we have just a budget member board that you wanted to add.
That's the one that was considered from the 20th.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not a member. Okay, I got you. I got you. Jack, we need to amend the agenda if we can.
The only thing we added is some appointments to the area agency.
Okay.
I passed out a letter to the Re-Receivers of the Southwestern Commission about the regional aging advisory council. So the people who are concerned by it for their asking for the board to consider possibly doing that.
Does any other board member have anything to add to the agenda? If not, I would suggest we preempt the motion. We add the Southwestern Commission. Of course, the budget member was already on the agenda to speak.
So move it, Chairman.
So we have a motion and a second to add that out to the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion passes. Let's go ahead and take that. The Southwestern Commission has been set. There's a seven county aging advisory council. And the members on that currently are Ms. George Crawford of Franklin, Commissioner Ronnie Beal of Franklin, and Jim Rutner, who is our health director. We didn't have three alternates that are listed there. And we need to reappoint those folks. Jack, I didn't hear anything that said they weren't willing to serve, Ronnie.
I think, you know, I don't make all that often, but you give me that twice a year. And the reason that the advisory council is important is because of what we really end up doing. If you have a problem with a loved one in a nursing home or a rest home, and you'd like to bring that to the commission or council, they will hear that. There's more than that than you can imagine for people that your loved one may not understand. But they do a great job at regulating doing that. And of course, as long as you have Dorothy Rose Crawford as a member, it will be done right. So I would gladly accept to continue my service on this council.
Okay, so Commissioner Beal's on that council. If I can interrupt, have a motion. So I would entertain a motion for another board member to approve these three. And the alternates also. And the alternates. This is not, this is regional council. It's not a county. Say, we have a motion and a second to reappoint the members and the alternates as originally. Any discussion? And if not, I would say aye. Aye, opposed. That motion passes. So we're on that.
Therefore, the board meeting this afternoon has also mentioned that two of their members are eligible. I'm going to address that there.
Do you have to ask that?
I'm not sure how that, how the logistics of that board works.
We would have to have it.
June, I got it written down here. June 20th.
And go back to budget number 175. We had questions sufficient of all that. And Commissioner Tate, do you have any additional information about that?
I do. Finally got this information this afternoon at the airport board meeting. I have a letter here which I'll pass around. Sorry I didn't have a chance to make copies of it. It's got to be a little five, but anyway. This was part of local funds. It's a portion of a match, about 11 percent. Looks like a $50,000 federal grant designed for the widening of the rehabilitation project. For the likes of widening, working on some of the tarback issues. It looks like we had $16,667 budgeted last year for deaths. And due to some reason, the state decided that they needed more funds for the design. So they put in another $50,000 to put this match in, $5,096. The airport authority before the code of the nation was like, pretty good before. And I'll pass this along. I also received, if anybody's interested, a thing they passed out this afternoon. Economic impact of airports in North Carolina. I just want to read one statistic. As I was sitting there in that meeting this afternoon, I just glanced at it. They say, according to this manual from the state, they say that Jackson County's airport had a, which the airport is really North County, Paris and Mayakin Counties, had a direct economic impact in Jackson County of $230,000. Mayakin County's airport had a direct economic impact of $2,150,000. That's quite significant. They said they had 78 different planes take off land there today. Which I thought was Mayakin's and South by the laws of the state. I guess it's that time of year we're meeting. The board thinks that's low, but I'm just following what the state has put out here.
So it's been decided that we don't want it. If we had it. There was some discussion last year when they did the redoing of the tarback area and all that. There was some discussion that the FAA had some grant money that would possibly be available in the future. But that's not going to happen. So we had to allocate the money from the, the $16,667 within our budget last, current budget.
Usually we get a $150,000 a year, which they call vision 100, each time we're making a budget. So that $16,667 match is already in there. And then like, when the team says, they actually spent a lot of $50,000 in federal money and it wants to be spent by June 30th. I talked to Teresa about it today. But the ultimate thing is, I guess, basically, this is kind of the design work for widening. And then on that same letter, you'll see there's like $2 million of funds out there to widen if the board chooses to move forward.
But that, Paul, the vote to move forward on that wouldn't be this board vote. It would be the airport authority, of course, and they.
Then it would benefit you all.
And it can thus.
Right.
The management.
That's looking like it's going to happen in the next upcoming fiscal.
Upcoming fiscal, what?
No, not this.
Not current fiscal.
Not current. I don't think so. It's handed out.
So what did?
Magnifying glass to look at it.
So let me get straighten my head to the budget number 5,500 pieces.
It's really amazing what, for the money that the county's invested over time, and what this airport authority may have been getting for what they're doing now. It's pretty amazing. Anytime you can get $2 million, $2,000, it's going to increase the viability of impact. Let me ask this, Chair, on the measure of impact, number 2,150,000. And if you got that much of that.
That exact question was asked in our meeting this afternoon, Ron. And that came from the state on what they're, they get on the score. Were you asking the 2.1 that I mentioned?
Yeah.
That came from this book, which I'll pass to you, is Vision Education. I thought you were asking about 2.65.
No. I heard you say the impact.
Yeah, and it came directly out of that book there in the back. I have them marked.
So this is budget member, this kind of budget.
Current budget.
Current budget.
Yeah, like I said, it has to be spent by June 30th. About $50,000 piece of the $5,556 match is worth 50. And that 50 against grant money, that's just a tax burden. One of the $5,556 of Cameron's fund. Sixteen, the airport is already, it's set up as a capital project. So that means it continues on. We just amend it, you know, this is a sample. But it's that 53 there. That is the airport capital project. So anytime they get new funds, we have to make a reservation. Because all of that runs through the county. So that's why the amendment probably looks kind of odd. But at the most, we transfer to the airport around $5,556 and appropriate loan balance. But then on the other side, we have to incorporate the grant funds that boil high levels through the county.
Let me ask you, have we spent the $16,667?
No, we have not.
So this was, that was an estimate going in of what this.
They normally get the 150.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then it increased to 200.
Exactly.
And this is the balance between the two.
It's going to get to 150, 70. He said it gets to 150.
Well, they can expect. The 50 is spent.
Then we get $40,000, $45,000 a year.
$40,000 a year for operating.
Operating. And any money that's made now after the FBO, we're discovering that now.
Do you want it to be made from our least FBO deal back to the airport?
They get roughly $7,000, $7,500 a year from fuel costs. It's somehow related to fuel and other products.
If I start with the FBO, we get so much money that I don't have a second figure. But they get a percentage of what he gets. And it doesn't, but with that money coming back into it, they don't have a second bucket.
No, it's all red, but it can.
If you, just, not be easier, we have copies of the threshold and the comp. What we got now, as of this afternoon, they had about $2,200 checking. I have it. As liaison, I like my motion. Go ahead. Move this funds out of general fund, out of bond balance, incorporate it.
In doing so. Just finish another design project. That motion and a second discussion.
In doing this transfer, we're in essence saying, go ahead and get your, we're in a nonchalant way giving approval to widening projects. Could you interpret it that way?
I'm at faith with it. I'd say we're, I'd say we're voting to.
We haven't voted on that yet.
Yeah, we'd be voting to proceed with that grant.
The plan that is.
They might not approve the plan. You know, $2 million ain't the size.
They might not approve the plan.
Does it answer your question, Paul? I'm not quite.
Well, yeah, I think we need some serious discussion about the destiny of $300,000. Says in Jack's, a prelude that, you know, says here that they've been approved for additional funding of 2.9 million. So have they been approved or?
They don't have that money or anything like that yet. Nor to qualify, they have just kind of pieced it pieces together. They've got to have an approved design plan before they can qualify for the 2.9 million dollars. 2.9 million dollars is going to require a 10 percent local match, which is $290,000. This $160,000 that they're giving this year was in the budget. And the local 10 percent match was $16,000 that's in there now. They got an additional $50,000 to cover the technical planning and design work for the project. It's going to be more than $160,000 unless the other 50 came in. And so that puts the whole, the whole cost of the development and design of the 290,000, which means in addition to what the county's already appropriated this year with $16,000, we require another $5,000 more to make the M7 match for 2.2. And that's for planning and design of the runway project. And I think if they get, they feel pretty sure that if they get an approved plan and design, that they will get the 290, 2.9 million dollars for the runway expansion and widening.
And then they open, how wide is the airport, the runway?
I don't know.
It is probably 75. Why am I at 100?
I think 75 feet.
75.
75 feet. And I think one of, probably one of the reasons for that, perhaps, Paul, is people call the crash beside the airport last year. And those three people died in that crash. Five people died in that crash. They actually ran off the runway and they crashed when they hit the grass to put those birds in the flames. I think they see this, what they tell me, as a safety and an additional safety for widening the runway. So it's going to guarantee that people won't crash out there if they want to make it a little bit safer. And that's the purpose.
Widening 75 to 100, local funds did approximately $290,000 federal. 2.6.
I have a test.
75.
I don't think they let the kids.
They don't. They have airport.
We have one discussion from where it was in Alabama. Why they're not picking up our first one.
Our airport doesn't have an instrument approach. It's scheduled fly rules. I guess the reasoning is that a longer and wider runway is safer for just an airplane to land. Because you don't, you're not able to zero land on a signal like you do in some other airports where you can probably signal in. And I'm not a pilot.
But it's.
I don't probably even press that as my idea. But we've got so many mounds here, it's impossible to get an instrument approach landing in here. And so I think probably one of the trade-offs is with the bigger distance approach. You've got to stay by vision, fly rules. They're looking at ways to make the landing sure a little bit more safer. And I guess a wider runway is going to improve the safety of the airport.
Eric Rozan, engineer with the airport authority of W.K. Dixon, said he'd be more than happy to come in and answer questions, Ron. I got told that would be a bust.
Yeah.
Where we're going with that.
I think the other thing is that you've got, you've got a timeline. If this is not approved and requested within the next so many days, you may know more about that than I do, Jim, that the reason grant money is not going to be waived.
That's correct. Right in line.
Right there, right in line.
He gets sort of like the things like you shared, you got a 3 o'clock runway, 5:00. You know, 5:00 field, go to the end, play a little play for it. I don't think we can do that.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, I guess, right here, 3:00, I guess, I'll take 7:00. So we'll just go.
We had the last meeting, Ron. I just wasn't prepared. I was not taking advantage of that. I just wasn't prepared to answer those questions at once. I didn't have the information. I could have told you that that was the state that had an obligation of $50,000 for the design.
Will that, will the plan issue come up and fill in the wider runway?
Y'all voted on that last time.
Yeah, they're doing that ride study, but it shouldn't come in.
Is that already done, completed?
Yeah.
I was still working on it.
Have they had one down the way?
I don't know. It's a particular package, so I don't.
Oh, yeah, it's not going to affect the runway, but it'll affect that other place. The building, the hangar. On that ride, it's not, but it's not. My knowledge, not an ancient rule.
Well, I was following this, but I've got it set in my head that I can support $3 million, whether it's federal grant, local money, whatever. Do we have serious discussion? In discussions, we reiterate what we're voting on is $5,536 of the money. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. That motion passes. All right, on the budget, the general little approach this has, there is no particular plan where you go about this, the design. We'll just go through the budget average. We won't figure out what suggestions, Chairman. We've got three meetings set up already. The next meeting is, I think, Commissioner Tate, the fire, the superintendent. If you all want to, yes, I can have it here. On Thursday, Thursday. And then the following Tuesday, Lee and Jack, you discussed, and I did too, with Dr. Dunning, that the school board is supposed to be here for, that's largely part of our budget. They're supposed to be here for that. So suggest maybe we have discussion, a vote out, and we'll discuss anything you want to mean now. I would think the fire and the school would be more specific meetings. Maybe do things tonight. And just in the interest of mental focus, I think we ought to set a time. Think maybe, maybe an hour and a half, another hour and a half we spend on this. And then we'll recess, or we'll go two hours earlier if we want to go. But I think we get down to where we're asking lots of specific questions. I know the cabinet manager has passed. I know I should bring the meeting this individually. If you have questions, we can't do it here, but I don't think we're going to have 10-hour meetings. General discussion, the binding bill.
And the department heads are also all educated, you know, top of the table.
And if specific questions come up, then we can request the department heads to be here under such a convenience. Is that okay to proceed that way, General? And I had just a little, this came up a little bit in some discussion with Christian Haber and myself. We were heading to Raleigh, and so I, he and I talked about it. And so I took it on myself to do a little research. I like facts, figures, lore here's is. Let me just explain what this is. We were talking about our, our tax rate is the lowest in the state. We all understand that. We also understand that the other part of that picture is the assessed value or the real value of the property. So I knew I had seen some information somewhere about this. So I found this with the help of some folks from North County Association of County Commissioners. Let me give a copy of this to keep in mind from the media, also probably. You got a couple left to copy. Sure if you'd like to have it.
Dollar copy.
No, it's free. Thank you. But I think it's important to sort of assess where we are, understand where we are before we know where we're going. And I want us to sort of see, if you look down through there, it uses a tax rate for 2011, 2012, and then 2012, 2013. That's those sort of two columns in each county. That's their tax rate. And of course, you follow down to Mayakin, you see the 27.9. Well, the other part of that picture is your, your sales assessed ratio. What that is, and let me progress a little bit. This information was given to me by the North County Association of County Commissioners. They did not put it together. It was done by the North County Department of Revenue, looking at the complete tax figure for the state. What they did was took all 100 counties, took their actual real estate sale. And as you can look down through there, it shows how the actual sales assessed ratio for some counties is higher because their property is selling for less than counties have assessed for. For example, you go to Mayakin County, and our, our percentage is 120 percent, 124 percent. What that means is our property is selling, on average, 20 percent less than we have it on the tax book. Now, if you look at some neighboring counties, look at Clay County, for example. Clay County was the highest in the state, 142 percent. Their tax rate is 36 cents. But their property is selling for 42 percent less than the county has it on the tax book. So what that makes, their effective tax rate, that's on the far right-hand side, their effective tax rate multiplied by 142 percent. Everybody get that? So the effective tax rate to the citizen is 51 cents per hundred. And they did this for all 100 counties. Now again, the North County Department of Revenue doesn't have a dog in this. They don't have an opinion. They did this based on numbers, based on facts. And I felt like it was important that I heard people say, well, yeah, we've got a low tax rate, but we've got one biggest difference. No, we don't. The biggest difference in assessed rate and actual rate is Clay County, and they adjusted for that. Now ours is pretty high. Ours is one of the highest. It's along with Jackson County, they're 124 percent. But again, you take the actual tax rate, and they did it for the last two years. Theirs is 28 cents. They multiply that by 124.9 percent, gives their effective tax rate as 34.98. Anybody have any questions about that? I don't want to be confusing, but to me, that's important information to start with. Everybody got that?
Got the tax rates, too.
We're still, and so if you look, here with the meeting, if you look at our effective tax rate, in other words, if you took, you took a big scoop and you picked up my property and my house, and you said it in all 100 counties, you're still going to pay less, you're going to pay less in Mayakin County than you would anywhere else, based on the North County Department of Revenue's. So if we have any questions about this, do we question this? Do we understand this? And this is no action we can take. It's just, I think, it's just for the person to understand where we are. And I'm not suggesting we raise our tax rate. I'm suggesting we keep it where it is. We've been that way all along. There are some high tax rates in the state, but ours is not one of them.
State average is 63.
Yeah, if you look, look at the very end, on the third page, state average. And again, this is not actual tax rate. This is state average effective tax rate. It's 63.96 cents. And ours is a shade over half that. Our factor, the tax rate is 33.58. And that's adjusting for when we get rid of that. Anyway, that was some information that I thought we should have to see exactly where we are. If you don't get into the budget, there are two sides of it. Roughly half these pages deal with revenues. I know all of you have had a lot of fun reading this. Good bedtime if you're living, Jack. You're not bored, but reading budgets does sometimes. It can be a little, it can be a little dry, but not majority. The revenue side, let's start with that, if it's okay. What were you, Jack, to put together? The first part goes always from debt proceeds to transfers to general fund. It's all in there, that first section. If you have questions about any particular part of that, any part of the revenue side. Most important page in this whole section, when it comes to this, is on page four. Where it says zero. There you go, page four.
Where are you looking, Mr.?
I'm on page four, under general fund revenue. Page four.
General fund revenue.
For the new members of the board, if you don't agree with the Medicaid swap, that. For the new members of the board, if you don't remember the Medicaid swap, that a lot of very hard work in the state did let swap that back. We heard that one was wrong in that part, too. So, if that had not have happened, that Medicaid swap, Jack, you might have an idea of what that number would be. I have no idea.
Well, it would be, it would be horrendous, but the states are facing the same situation that we would be facing if they hadn't taken it over. And it did cost the county some money. We had, we lost our article forty-four sales tax. But when we found it, losing that a half cent sales tax, we have gained more than what the savings would be on the expenditure side of Medicaid than what we lost with additional revenues, so.
Many times.
Many, many times. I think it only took us one year, if it was, a year, to overcome the loss of revenues because of what the increase in measure would have been in Medicaid. And it keeps going up, and I think it's real issue that the states have to balance in there, but this year, they're trying to figure out how to do it.
Jack, I just had a question on, and I made note you're going to do it on page five, the next page, under general revenues. You have the sales tax. I know for 2012, we had five million seven hundred and ninety thousand. That dropped to five million five eighty-five for the current year that we're in, is that correct?
Yeah, the revised budget for the year ending June 3rd, 2012, was five point seven million.
Right.
That, and then the revised budget for the current year we're in is five point five eight five million, and our estimate next year, five point nine. That's just basically what we actually are seeing, so.
Are you, you read?
That was based on me having, you know, the eleven-twelve budget I didn't prepare, but the twelve thirteen I did. Being new here, the poll is thirty percent of our article forty goes to schools, and sixty percent of article forty-two goes to schools, which is fund twenty-one. When I took a look at the numbers, just based on like year percentages, if you'll, because if you flip over to the school reserve fund revenue, you'll notice they went up from one point four to one point six.
Right.
But if you aggregate the two, and compare kind of year to year, they're pretty close. Like I said, that was my first-year budgets in here, and just based on those percentages, it would like to shake out that way. But there's actually a formula that the NCACC shared with the county, and I wasn't aware of it at the time. And of course, the state doesn't collect our sales tax for free. They have costs, you know, they have costs in there. So, when you allocate those costs, you know, not only across what we keep in the general fund, but what we, you know, have to donate to the schools, capital reserve fund, the base numbers, as we'll see, twenty-four things back up, they're more in line with actuals, does that make sense? But also, for twenty-four thing, I took last year's actuals and bumped it up about two percent. That's about the kind of the state.
The topic of what you're doing, it didn't?
Yeah, it doesn't quite flow, yeah.
It didn't make sense to me. It looked like you bumped it up about six percent.
Right, but I didn't. Because like I said, if you took the five seven ninety and added the one four thirty-five, and then took the five five plus the one six, then you're kind of in line. If you took this for years.
What I was reading and heard from the state, they're looking at maybe two, three.
Two to three.
Two, three.
And I put two million more.
Okay, it looked like you put six. I was thinking that's a little, that's a little hefty on the revenue side, okay.
Well, how far are we? I mean, we're at the end of May now.
Yes.
What month have you got? Have you got March yet?
Let's see, March will come in June. I've got through February, just three-month lag.
How many days we got to keep?
Yeah.
That's what we should.
It should be good, at least every month.
Yeah, there's a three-month lag.
There's a three-month lag.
And that's, and that continues to get worse over the past four years. It continues to get one week, two weeks, then you're another month, and that.
One of the promises they made is about changing these sales taxes, which they did, because Medicaid is something that they would speed up our collecting of money, and they have, we, and they have done that. Might be good just for, I'd like to take just a second, Mr. Chairman, measures. Article thirty-nine, that's the oldest one-cent sales tax that we had, goes back to the seventies, and that's based on point of sale. So, all that money in article thirty-nine is what, is the sales tax that I actually collected here in Mayan County on goods and so forth that were sold here. Article forty is collected statewide and redistributed on population, because a lot of counties don't have retail centers, and so they were hurting. And with the Medicaid swap, they changed article forty-two from statewide collection distributed on population to a point of sale. And so, article forty-two, we actually, if you look at our statistics, we actually came up a little better on point of sale than did statewide distribution. But that's how that money is distributed to the counties. Thirty-nine is just here in the county, and forty is collected statewide, distributed county on population. Forty-two is what's collected, and all things understand here that happens. And like Laurie said, out of those, article forty and forty-two, sixty, sixty.
Thirty percent of article forty.
Thirty percent of one, and.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent of the other have to be designated specifically for schools. And so, when they first passed that, that first sales tax, it had a sunset on it. And after it dropped ten percent, it was supposed to drop ten percent a year. After it dropped ten percent, General Assembly decided to make that permanent, and not reduce it more. And to your market, from now on, those schools improve this. And so, that's the way it is, and that way for ten years.
So, Laurie, on, back on, our locally collected article thirty-nine, this year, we had three million six seventy-six. And next year, we're projecting three seven ninety-one.
Right.
So, that in itself is about three percent. Is that right?
Uh, it may be. My budget numbers for fourteen are based on budget, they're based on actuals. I took last year's actuals and increased two percent.
Okay, okay.
So, you can't really look budget to budget.
But, okay. So, that's based on actual, I mean, we add two percent. I'm fine with that, it's just, in my mind, and you can see where I look.
Yeah, I understand, if you do. If you add it with that fund twenty-one, though, you'll see that the totals across the board flow better.
I understand.
Well, Laurie, we still have an old office for the municipality.
We sure do.
Article forty-four, which eventually means that towns lost article forty-four sales tax as well, and the money that they lost from article forty-four is taken out of county article thirty-nine.
Sure is.
Turned into the towns.
About eighteen to twenty thousand a month, going through.
And Jack, I could ask one more question on revenue side. It looks like on the, it's our largest revenue is outdoor taxes.
Right.
Which appears as almost dead flat. You know, page two, I'm on page two, under the tab, general fund revenue, sorry, I backed that. You got 2013 revisers, twenty-six million seventy-one thousand, and you're projecting, it looks like maybe a one percent increase.
Well, I don't want to say one percent. Twenty-six thousand, I revised about twenty-six thousand seventy-one, but I read about twenty-six, twenty-six million, I read two thousand. We're projecting probably a billion three hundred and twenty-three thousand, which is, I don't know what percentage that is. It's a lot less than.
And it, and just, if you'll notice, the biggest change is that last line item, which stands for current year tax motor vehicles. It's going from six forty-six to eight seventy. That's a one-time shot. Because of the tax and tax gather system, you're going to have overlap, so you're going to have sixteen months of revenue, just for one year on.
And you'll have a little higher collection.
Well, we can budget the higher collection, but my general statute.
You didn't budget the higher collection.
I did not.
We can't budget more than our actual percentage.
By general statute.
I'd be sure.
Okay.
That is sixteen months of revenue, so that's your jump there really. And again, that's just a one-time thing, because the overlap between our billing system and the new tax and tax gather.
Once the system gets in place and it's working properly, then even if it looks like a hundred percent, the taxes don't know what they were.
It's what they're.
About eighty-four percent.
Yeah, so they, so then you may relate that next year.
Yeah.
But essentially, your, your outdoor taxes are essentially.
They're flat, yes.
And we do the same type with outdoor taxes. You have to clear to the tax place, multiply pounds of tax rate, multiply that down, your relation percentage, our collection percentage is just one hundred and ninety-seven percent. And so, that's the maximum we can budget for later, before I actually.
Laurie, remind me what, online item, four, two, one, oh, two of them.
Uh huh.
Motor vehicle.
Prior to your taxes.
Prior to your taxes, is that collected in the rear?
Yes, that's the link was.
Is that actual, is that projected, or is that actual?
Uh, which number, the hundred thousand?
Yes.
I can tell you that's current budget, we're at one oh six when I look today.
Okay.
So, we're, we're right on target with that.
But that's better than the slide out. Much better.
Agent Jack?
I think it is, and I think it is, this, this credit for the tax department, it's more of a credit for the taxpayers than county. It goes to our taxpayers who really could about paying their taxes and paying a long time. And one for motor vehicle taxes, our higher collection rate could be even higher, sharply. Ninety-seven percent is about, should be about the statewide average for a good tax collection rate. And all counties in North Carolina that are collecting, so it's ninety percent a year, profit taxes, which basically means, if everybody's not paying their, their regular amount, your tax rate is increased, and those people who are paying have to pay more money, but the taxpayers in Mayan County are very good, I think, paying their taxes and paying a long time. Motor vehicle taxes, it's the one that we have a problem with.
That was one question I had, just remember on the, on the revenue, yeah. Anything else feeling on that?
I think for a point that, Mr. Chairman, that, one thing, when I first came on this board, if you look on page eighteen.
You're still in the general fund?
Yeah. If you look on page eighteen, I think when I came on the board, that number, we relied heavily on investment, return on investments. Just like all of us, or, you know, we're earning a cent and a half maybe to bed.
Yeah, probably our best. We've got some commercial paper, we're earning probably one, six, oh percent, six, ten percent.
Put it in perspective, from oh six to oh eight, that, that period of time, we were collecting probably interest on investments, somewhere similar to a million dollars a year. That's a big drop now, a big one.
Well, is it a million dollar drop? What kind of investments? Is that cash?
That's cash on, cashing on investments. A lot of our cash, the county has, this is, Laurie can explain this, like I did, but a lot of it's in patent and trust fund in the state that receives interest on that. We do have some short-term and other CDs that finance our investment, and Ryan, when they come due, she shops for the best rate and tries to maximize interest. But we're restricted as a governmental unit. We can't take things that have a high yield, that go for a high yield. We've got to have risk, and we're not allowed to do that.
I've got a question on the page nineteen, the rents. I'm making notes, is that the, what we're, income we're getting in the, in the incubator facility?
Parks and.
Maybe like we rent all the lumped in that part.
Parks and great building, and the incubator are two bigger sources there.
Even twenty-eight thousand year rein and fifty-six.
Yeah, I had reduced that last year because I had a company leave driving limits for our budget. So, I didn't know, you know, of course, if somebody was going to replace, I can't wing it actually, but somebody left, so it was a little bit.
With, with, with.
Yeah.
That's with, with.
And of course, you know, not knowing.
So, you reduced it.
I reduced it, but of course, now we've got it. Somebody in there, I put it back, yeah. So, we're going to come out better too this fiscal year than the twenty-eight thousand, because we did get something happening.
So, there's more like a comment on investment money. When you take a million dollars out of this budget, you found that out several, you didn't have to rip all the way through. I mean, it don't, in a lot of counties, if we didn't have a place that, you just probably invest, you can have so much. So, we don't want to do that. We do wish that was a little bit better for all of us, not just the county, but good luck, you cost a lot of money.
But that was actually still owed money, it's a good thing.
It's a kind of our.
Rigor refinance.
Like, like Jack said, we're limited, but, you know, my department, we try to do best we can, and that's in our, you know, we don't want to throw our eggs on one basket. We have some money in commercial paper, some money in like money market segments, we care local, some money in our central cause of war, and so, like that.
I may be an optimist, but I think our service fee right is. And on page twenty-one, Jack, on the timber sale, you know, they've talked about two or three years, they changed the formula. Where, where does that stand now? Where are we at?
I think, I think they're working on reorganization the way it is right now, and that's an improvement from the way it was before. The way it was before, we were really getting, getting less and less money on the, selling timber on US forest service land, but they changed that formula, so it's, it's back. And I believe, I believe they're going to sustain that hopefully for the next few years, but that money all goes to schools.
This is a question.
Uh, I don't know how much effect that had on it, I haven't heard, but.
I haven't heard of them specifically, like, we actually.
Most of all that timber sale money goes into, that's, that's to schools, and it can't last some plant, any local, or for example.
So, they're redoing it fifteen years, twenty years, man, so, can't long, it's pretty good work.
Well, it used to be a really good source, because we had a lot of timber sales here in Connecticut, National Forests and so forth, and some areas of the country have metal rights and so forth, there's been a lot of money off those. That's a really, really big deal for especially the question space.
Is room, room revenues, TDC revenue today elsewhere?
Hey, um, the end of this revenue section, uh.
Which one of those three, what do we have, connect that, I said.
I said.
I was just looking at this. None of them are.
Uh, we'll get to that later. It's on the page seven.
I think it's land and then, yeah.
Service fee.
Under general.
Page seven, general fund revenue tab.
Okay, Highlands.
Yeah, you go to the fifth line down, that's Oxy-Tax Highlands, Oxy-Tax Nana Hala, Oxy-Tax Franklin.
I'm hoping, just comparing where I'll ask when we get to expenditure on that.
Okay.
Service fees and charge.
So, those are on, uh, so, again, that's pretty much a category, the revenue split is, and after we like to.
Paige, you probably lack the first understanding that how this collects. No, no, I, I just, we'll, we'll get to it, we do expenditure, that's one thing I'll talk about, I'll really make a change.
Mr. Chairman, this time, I'll do the appropriate, now, I tried to go back exactly, look, you know, on the, on the, on the letter on a current old budget. Could you give us that, and if you didn't give it tonight, that's fine. I've tried to see what the high street money was, because it really gives a false indication of the true budget. If you took away all the high street money, that I'm talking about, everything from the social services, I know we've got two U-paces last, but we've got one U-pace we do.
I don't have it denied, but the only one I can take that is sent there in the budget messages, is that those two that we have this year, the transformation grant, and the money that we have to pay on the state behalf, the state currency money, the daycare operators, that's one point four million dollars, and the transformation grant is five hundred seventy thousand dollars. So, it's a loan, over two million dollars. If we didn't have those passive money, that we had to collect and dispense, we don't make any money off of that, then our budget would be two million dollars, play it just off of that. And if you take a look at the total, especially in the human services part, if you look at their charts in the front, you'll see how much of that's federal money, and our state money, how much is local money, especially on DSS, about, and I have a, I'm hearing a percentage on there, but it's still not five.
And the child support money, we just pick that up.
Most of that is, we could go through and, and show you the money that, that actually passes through the chemicals, that we don't have any option on.
That was the point I made there tonight, I think, if you, if you compare apples to apples, before I was on the board at County Vegas, about forty-nine years, take that money out, it wasn't in that, the budget you proposed. That was the point I made there tonight, I think, if you, if you compare apples to apples, before I was on the board at County Vegas, about forty-nine, take that money out, it wasn't in that, the budget you proposed this year is forty-four and change, but it's about, at least forty.
I feel like it's more than that, but I, I mean, I could.
They could be, and there, there are other, there are other expenses, or other revenues and offsets and, and budgets that, 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 that may be for a specific program, and it doesn't really affect the property tax, um, not like the county corporation, or education, for example.
But most of the general public, you know, they just look at totally numbers, that's why that budget's blowing, uh, more money, I mean, if, uh, I think that, if you eliminate the prices of state descent, and keep sending money for higher money, we don't get the keep percentage by the way, like they do ourselves, that's.
You want to figure out someone to charge that from handling.
Yeah, good luck with that. But I mean, I, I think that would be good for the public to know that the actual budget they're taking, and it has nothing to do with really the funds that they operate this camp.
The most part.
Well, if, if, for example, if you have a particular appropriation, instead of like a grant, you get the money, but ask for expense specifically for certain things, you don't have a discretion over that, yeah. Well, what you've got is a, a much smaller amount in the total overall budget that has kind of discretion, and most, most people, it's, it's, it's understand that, but a lot of it is either dictated by the state or federal government, or any choice you have to provide for services, like the court system.
Look on, look on your income side, your actual taxes are about the same, they've been free flat, your actual taxes have been free flat, but your sales tax is down, go back to, say, oh five, oh six, your sales tax is down how much, three million dollars?
It's down a lot, it's down a lot, but, but also they took away part of our sales tax, but they also took away part of our expense on the, so, you gotta get all those things in balance.
Do you have anything else on the, on the, the revenue?
On the, uh, on the, on those charts there, you've got one label, I think it's right after I charged, general fund budget history for five years.
What's that, General?
Maybe, that somebody forgot to run out any, any label, they, it's the fourth schematic order, and then look at that for the last five years, you've got your budget, but then you also have a revised budget, if you get information from elsewhere in this document, particularly on twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, our budget, which was the number, I think, we set after meetings like this, was forty-four million, but the revised budget's forty-eight million.
That happens every year, what happens, we set the budget based on the best information we have on label revenues, and, and, and mandated expenditures, offset balanceless revenues, you'll see that in, in any county budget you look at, normally, it comes in higher, and Laura can give you a much more detailed explanation, but we have things that happen during the year, where the state will come along and say, well, we want you to do this program, or you buy for a grant, or you have something that comes along that, that increases your budget, like one of these programs, like the, like the transformational grant or something like that, that'll make your budget look a lot bigger, because you don't have any discretionary spending on that, it's all for certain things, Laura can probably give you a much better description of that than I could, because it always changes from the time you adopt the budget until you go down, it's, it's been, my experience, especially in the last six years in Bagdad County, that a revised budget, in most cases, has always been a little bit higher than the budget was adopted once you, uh, first.
Well, I did.
But, but Laura, can you, can you?
Explain four million dollars in five minutes?
I, I, we can, we, we, we can go back and give you all the reasons why that went from forty, forty-four to forty-eight, but I can't do it.
We've done budget amendments.
I can't do it right now.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to say it, budget amendment, that's what.
There's amendments, but like Jack said, you may get two transformation grants if they.
I must ask you a question, we didn't add four million dollars, we didn't.
Well, some of the things you add to it too are, like, appropriations from fund balance.
Fun balance, the pool project.
If you take fund balance, if you take out a fund balance, put it in a expenditure account, it makes your budget a little bigger, you take out.
So, we did that, connect, that's a bad action.
The board's a naughty action, to go, forty-five, forty-eight.
You know, several cases where the board approved things for appropriation from fund balance, it wasn't in the original approved budget, it happens every number in the year, you know, it wasn't actually appropriated at that time, it depends on anything, but it's appropriated, so, it may be in fund balance, but just for, you know, purchase of land, if that comes out of fund balance, then, that makes the whole budget look like it's bigger, but it's a one-time expenditure, and the next year, if you see it start off this year, less, than what it did final budget was last year, because it doesn't have those things in it, but if you'd like, and I think it'd be helpful to know, we can go through, we can give you a list of everything that's made adjustments in the original budget from July first up to the down.
Would it be appropriate for this board to try between then, these expenditures for the next year, I mean, we want all of our department heads to be good handed, your budget to stay within our budget, and it doesn't seem like we necessarily have a budget to work in, that.
How much you got stayed in North Carolina, you own that board?
DSS and health are.
DSS is the big.
Stuff just happens, you're given one number, and then you get your real number, so you have to adjust your last report.
But aside from those things that kind of have to be staged, it's locals can be, palm fields, soccer fields.
But things like that, why would you put in the budget, if we're gonna spend, if we're gonna spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand on this one, a hundred and forty thousand on property in Highland, from the office, that's gonna be available, or it's gonna come out, you don't know that, that's part of what we're likely to do, is deal with things as, as presented with it, you know what I'm saying, and why would you budget something you have no idea that you're expecting to, for example, I think that's what they're asking, is if, like, this property in Highland, there was no way to know a year ago that that was gonna be available, so why would you, but, or how much would you put, I guess, be my question, how would you know how to do that?
I can tell you one point six million of that increase is for Parker Meadows property, full cap renovations and all, those three items that are, um, that the Irish lake is, the one point one million of that increase.
If, could we make projections on what we want to do as a board for the next year?
That's what we do, that's what the budget's all about, the budget is nothing but an educated guess, and it's an estimate on what the expected revenues and expenditures are going to be, you can't guarantee that it's gonna come in that way, in two thousand eight, the county adopted a budget, uh, for July first, and then when the recession hit us, our, and our sales tax started going down, down the tubes in the fall, we had to make a top mid-year adjustment, we made a half dollars off of these expenditures off the budget before that year was up, because we did have revenue coming in there as was predicted from already big loads of expenditures, so, all it is, is a financial plan based on the best information that you have, we expect our department heads to give us the best information they have to justify that, and we do that, and do the budget document for the entire county and board, uh, the budget, when it's adopted, it's adopted by the board, and it's basically a financial plan for the operation of every facility in the county for the next year, with the best information you have at that time, it would be virtually impossible to actually know what might come up several months down, down the road.
Hey, don't be saying.
So, that's why, that's why we probably built in some contingency money, and we need to keep a fund balance in case another expenditure comes up that we hadn't calculated on, or revenue source does not come in like we predicted, but if we got into another, um, recession area, our sales tax started going down, it all set back.
You can take, you can take money.
I'm not sure I answered your question, but that's, that's basically what this is, what this is working for.
You can take, you can take money to mistake statute, where you can take, you can take money and put it in a capital expenditure designated fund, do I say that right, Jack, I've seen that somewhere, and you say, we're gonna make two million dollars, and we're, we're gonna set this aside for capital projects, or, or recreation, or whatever, and then during that year, you can spend that, the answer is yes, you can.
I mean, a few people I talked to in the public, all of a sudden, they're hit, so, and, uh, me too, I might have had it in the board now, wow, but, what we're planning as major expenditures next year, is that detailed in the word of budget, or is there a list for that?
The, the only thing that we're really planning on next year as far as any major expenditure is capital projects, and most of those have been financed, and they're in the budget as far as debt service goes, and pay for that, the one that hasn't been completed right now is the Highland school renovation, one point five million dollars, that's, the, the amount of the debt service on that one point five million dollars is in the budget, but nothing is in the budget for any other major capital group this next year.
Got that, I think, let's just talk, I think what I'll talk about is like, the, the Parker Meadows property, you were talking about the Highland property that was mine, were those budgets, the answer is no, because those are things we didn't, we didn't see that, I think there had been some discussions, at least to my knowledge, for ten years, about trying to finance the property to expand recreation, but nobody knew that was gonna be available, I saw it in the board, and so, when the budget, and guys, you're correct, I'm wrong, when the budget process started, we thought that was gonna be available, we could just go ahead and set it, and then it's up.
Well, you could, I've got around.
How much you set aside, with, you know, you're negotiating a price, they start adding seven hundred thousand, so, we go ahead and say, okay, we'll set aside seven hundred thousand, we're implying you're gonna pay that for the property, or do we just, as business folks and as county commissioners, likely, do that, and go through the process of deciding whether or not that's something we should do, now, I understand what you're saying, I think you have to have some flexibility during the year to, to, something to come to level with you, things in the business, of, act on it, and then that becomes part of it, do I say that right, Jack?
Yeah, you, you can do that, you can decide that our goal is to set aside so much money for a particular capital project, and, and you can make contributions in that each year, until you, until you come up with enough money to do that project, if you can do that, or you can finance whatever, we operate on, and I know I can't abide stress of imagination, on a bottom line, cruel basis, it basically says, we can't put stuff down if we don't know it's gonna be there, if we're not guaranteed, that's what happened, if you recall back in the seventies, and I know you're all not familiar with that, when, when New York City was on the verge of bankruptcy, and they had to fly for a grant, and they put it down as a revenue in the budget, whether they got it or not, and they made assumptions based on false premise that the money was gonna be there, and it wasn't actually there, what we have to do is make pretty well certain that the money's gonna be there before we put it down, now, if something happens during the year, you gotta have a fallback position, you gotta have a fund balance, you gotta have a, you gotta have something to keep, to hold you, hold, hold you harmless in case like that, in case like, if that were to happen, but, there, there have been cases in the past where a county had a particular project that they wanted to work on, and it's gonna take a lot of money, and so, what they would do is designate that money for their particular project, I recall one was a football stadium at one time, and they wanted to build a football stadium, and they thought they'd just put so much money aside each year into a capital reserve fund for the football stadium, essentially, they could have enough money to build it, but they never did, they never did reserve enough money, because every time they got money, lost one of them, and so, they finally ended up having to finance part of it, but they designated some money in a capital reserve fund for that, we designate, or have designated in the budget, a certain kind of money, in an economic development reserve fund, that's there, business comes in, and they water, and they need silver, and they need a way to generate, uh, a business, create jobs, we have a little reserve fund that we can do that, that's only used if the board commission appropriates that money out of a reserve fund into an expenditure account, and so, you can do things like that if you're a board, you can do.
That's good, yeah, I'll have something else on, on, maybe, appropriated fund balance at one. Franklin, we've got a pretty good sign of appropriated fund.
One point six million dollars is, is simply budgeted appropriated fund balance this year.
I think you meant to say undesigned fund balance.
No, designated.
Which one, this, this budget, this year?
For this year, yeah, the total, I know, we have designated funds in your general, in your fund balance, right?
We, we've appropriated or recommended appropriation, one point six million dollars out of the county's available fund balance for subsequent years expenditures, and most, all of those, if not all of those are one-time type of expenditures, not continuous operational expenditure, like salaries, until, we don't budget any of those out of fund balance.
Is that four point six paid to a particular thing, just?
There was, there's a list, I have a list of every item that makes up that one point six million dollars. And it's not operational expenses, it's not salaries, or wages, or benefits, or employees, or anything like that, not return, like, if, if there are things that can, to be said, I can't afford to do that, and we just don't do it.
But that one point six is just this year's contribution, that's not the total of the balance.
That's not the total, the total, the total balance, at the end of the year, we're required by the local government commission to say, how much money do you have left, and that's our fund balance as of June thirty, that's a snapshot in time, after you close out the year, you've paid all the bills that you need to pay, and, uh, reserved all those things that you still wanna have to pay out of fund balance, and how much is left, and, and part of that is designated, part of it is undesigned, and so, I think what you're looking at is how much is the undesigned in the fund balance.
Or the designated, yeah, it'd be good, just to have it printed out somewhere.
It'll show, it'll show, it's like in our office report, it shows the, the amount of fund balances appropriated for subsequent year expenditures, that's what's taken out of fund balance, put forward, expenditures that particular year, the percentage of fund balance that we have, uh, we take the total dollars, and Laura, you can help me here, the total dollars that we have in fund balance, um, take that figure, whatever that might be, and the general, the, the local government commission usually looks at your prior years, the total expenditures, and say that, uh, what percentage of money do you have on hand as a percentage of what your previous year's expenditures were, and they say, if you go below eight percent, you're in a world of trouble, most counties keep it up there at twenty plus percent, like we do here, but, the county, some, some time back, decided to make the fund balance goal to be twenty-five of current year's operational expenditures, not previous years, and so, that was going pretty good as long as the revenue was rolling, but, uh, even if you don't spend, even if you don't spend your fund balance, and your total budget drops, it looks like your fund balance is a higher percentage, but you may not have as many dollars in there as you had the year before, but, that's really, the fund balance is more or less a snapshot on June thirty, on what you're staying, it changes every day after that, is that right?
It changes daily, right?
Yeah, it is, but what I understand is, that is the designated, sorry, ma'am, what's it designated for, how it's been designated, and the total amount, I'll shoot you an email or something, maybe.
What's your saying, and the current budget, one point six million is just for prior year only.
Yeah, that's, upcoming year.
Yeah, I mean, for upcoming.
The next budget year, yeah, but if your total general fund, you have designated and undesigned funds.
Right, which is, if you look in our paper, you'll see assigned and unassigned, that's called the current all these accounts, and at June thirty of twenty twelve, we had almost sixteen million unassigned, which represented thirty-seven point six, exactly, that's what it kind of.
What is the percentage of assent?
Up of the percentage of assent, of total budget, or?
Of the general, but, but.
Of the total general fund, or this?
That's the other second.
That's the unassigned.
And then you have an assent, how?
Right, which is about one point six million.
This year.
Right.
Is that the total of the, of the assent, fund balance?
Well, it's up to one point three million, right?
And it's all, it's PMB in?
Right.
It's great, and the un, the unassigned, at least in my tenure here, has been dropped between fourteen, fourteen and fifteen and a half, about that, I mean, and that moves.
Yeah, there's a chart in the book, that kind of shows.
But you gotta pay bills, and so much, and.
And that goes up, obviously, when happenstance starts coming in, it goes down, right there. All right, Jim, any other?
I have a question for you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On those, when you were doing, you've done a lot of school budgets.
Yes, sir.
On the page, on the school revenue, on the, uh. If you, if you look down on total revenue, two thousand twelve, one point four million, two thousand five, two thousand thirteen, nine, one point six, department requested one point four six eight, and that's exactly what Jack has put in here, now, in your experience, that, that's grand total, I think, um, a lot of people don't understand the school reserve fund, and that's the, that's the article forty money, am I right?
Yeah, what would you go, thirty percent of one and sixty percent of the other?
Right, right.
Article four, the half six, so.
Now, with the forty, it's thirty percent, article four, two, sixty. And most of that money that we, we have in there is money that we use to pay debt service on the school.
That's all we use up for currently.
Just, just make sure that people are reading that, say, that money's going to the school.
Right.
It is not.
It's going to the debt service.
Debt service.
To pay bills.
Debt service.
Yeah, I did, debt service.
Right, that's right.
Debt service.
Right. That's right.
On this page, I hear you're good, and it is showing the federal sector, all colleges. Yeah, in the, the North Carolina lottery fund. That's a loser off. That's what it says. It's not them, they just make connections this year. Well, there's a hundred million. The Senate budget says, the Senate budget comes out, it started out as an all kind of education lottery fund.
What page, Jim?
I said, page four.
Under what type of?
It's under, uh, school reserve fund revenue, is that what you were saying?
And I hear Commissioner Hayden asked a very good question to, for the appropriations shares that sits on that in the House committee. If you don't know, and I think most legislators know, that in the Senate budget, not only did it go away with forty percent, it just eliminates it. And it goes back to a hundred million dollars of the, and if you had that chart, and I think I've got it written, it shows that, you know, they've already showed this.
What they, what they were, I think if I understood, what they said is they're going to give you a hundred million dollars this year, and then next year, the Florida Central goes away, and all the general, the general senator will decide on how much money you get.
Exactly right. And I hear Ronnie Hayden asked specifically that way, are we going to have that money going forward? And Ronnie can answer for himself, but the answer is, I was sitting by the right witness, and the answer said, uh, we don't know. Which means, now, that's in the Senate budget, now, the House is going to work, you know, and the House is changing a lot of things at the Senate level, and we're hoping that's one of them.
The Speaker said that he was against changing that rule.
Right. He said that in front of us. But I heard Commissioner Hayden ask one of the appropriations, said on the appropriations committee, that specific question, and they said, they did not know. So, to depend on the lottery proceeds going forward for, for education, it don't look good.
There are a lot of counties that totally depend on that for money, school, they're pretty standard, we're not hoping.
If we, if you send up, it never has...
Mr. Hayden asked the perfect question.
You've been asking for yourself, Ron, what he's over.
Yeah, what you're saying, but here's my feeling on the whole thing. I think not only just us, they should pick the best across the state, because they're going to sign that they're setting education lottery. And yet, we hear it over and over, they're not going to balance the budget on the back of the county. We all get that, right? So, if you take that lottery fund away, and then we're going to have to give money over to school funds, out of the county, what's that doing? That's balance off the backs of the county. That's what I get to him, the Senator.
It never was, I said, for years.
Well, total loss so far.
Lottery and liquor money, hopefully, probably.
Just since 2010, Mr. Chairman, twice lost in the, in the total statewide, total loss in ATM funds, and a total loss in lottery funds for school debt payment, is six hundred and thirty-six million dollars. That's what it's, and, and now, that's going to go even further away, so. Hopefully, that, that those in the House, that Mr. Hayden talked to, we all talked to, that that, it goes from a sixty million dollar loss in 2010, to this year is a hundred and fifty-five million dollars. So, since 2009, ten visits a year, it's a loss of six hundred and thirty-six million, and you can see that affecting what comes to us too, Lord. So, Ron, right, if they want to, if they want to, if they want to be in education fund, then they literally introduced a bill to change, they made educational way.
They did, they did.
And they did introduce that.
And have it there.
Yeah. But they basically have said, when you correct me if I'm wrong, last year, were that they had to balance the budget of all this money that they had to pay out for unemployment, right? Or their party money. But when they put that in there, that's the education lottery, and everybody that was looking forward to seeing the lottery, was looking forward to funds going to school. So, I say.
It ain't that no problem.
That's right?
Okay.
Anyway, something else I have on that page, John, I was asking. Subs, yeah, down there, three oh three, nine oh, coming on down the page, and next to the last part right there.
He's on debt service.
Debt service, but you have the debt service fund, though.
He's on there.
Debt service fund.
Yeah, well, that's a subsidy fund out there. Said for the government for years. And that's a subsidy, is that the picture subsidy?
I think you're, I think you're in the wrong subsidy.
You're an expenditure.
You're an expenditures. You're still on the revenue side, but...
He's on an expenditure, he's just on the debt service fund. We were on school, we were on school reserve, I think he's on favorite at debt service fund revenues.
I've got to get it, it's looking convenient, but I wish we could get down there, page four, most of the time.
Debt service.
Debt service fund revenue.
I guess those two kind of tie together, though, because, you know, what we put in school reserve gets transferred over to debt service in order to make the payments. Are we having to answer your question now, or do you want me to wait?
No, it's just a question.
Might, might be good, because some of this should be for some people, is that, we have a general plan, we have a debt service fund, we pay the debt out of debt service fund, and in order to pay out debt service fund, you transfer money out of the general fund to debt service.
From money from the school capital over to the debt service.
On this, where is ABC? Is it on this same page?
ABC revenue?
Yeah, ABC, but if you want to tell them, call them.
It's under general fund.
That's what's going to happen a lot, see, they throw this on the backs of the children.
That's it.
And then it goes away. Does ABC thing, I don't remember.
The same one.
It's going to be for education. And right now, what they're doing, they're eating up the profits with real estate, salaries, administrative costs, and we're getting...
About eleven thousand a year.
Eleven thousand dollars a year. That's what's going to happen a lot of it.
How many calls have I answered?
Zero.
And liquor money? We're at one.
They're not in charge, is that what?
We're at one right here.
We're talking about your lottery fund going away.
They're going away, though. I mean, this is the first hand, they're going away.
They are, and I just feel like that. We need strongly set our foot down all the way across the state, and I've talked to several other commissioners down through the state about the same thing. The one we're talking about putting money, everyone, us now, is on this board right here, running his business, that guy. If you've got to pay the mortgage payment, or pay the loan, or tractor, you've got to pay one on some kind of land, but Ronnie's got to pay for his gas, and give them, you've got to pay for your mortgage payment on fielding, and I've got to pay for one on a motor truck. We don't take that money, we don't try to spend it just because we've got a debt back on the top of us, we pay that mortgage payment all the time. That's the way it goes. You get, seems like, thoroughly that money, if everybody was looking forward to it, it slipped right out of their hands.
It'll go away, it'll go away in time.
All right, Jim? Hey, Jim, do you got anything on the health department? I mean, that's, that's a biggie.
I have a good idea, I'm not going to spring it on you, I don't...
Oh, no, well, I'm talking about on...
Revenue.
On revenue.
Yeah.
I'm talking about...
I've got a while there, I always want you on...
I mean, has that, has the director said that they was, everything was?
Another recession, no, Jim didn't say that. Uh, let me see, year over two...
It's on page ten.
Under general fund, I think went back.
Where are you looking? Under other health department.
We're going to pay in revenues.
It's on revenue. It's still on revenue, man.
Yeah, we're good revenue. Yeah, we waste water, all these studies, air, new fee directions, so, there's no bills going on, and, and contrary to what you might be, new wastewater fees, and all I deal with environmental, all these other programs, I'm very unfamiliar with the health department. Wastewater treatment fees, uh, flat line, well fees, flat line, total revenue, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars projected for this year on fee related construction. And under the building inspection, I think that's about, uh, two hundred and forty thousand dollars projected revenue on building fees. So, we're looking at the total, four hundred thousand, we have three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year projected. While we're in this, I get you, I get you a wild hair. I talked about it before. That's three hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. What would it do, or would it do anything, and I've talked a lot of people about this, what would it do to waive those funds, those fees for a year, six months, two months, if you were willing to start construction of the house? Would that have any significant impact?
The only thing what I deal with, if you can't afford a ballot permit, you will build a house. I just pay five hundred dollars, it's five hundred dollars for a three seventy million house, right, Ron?
And square footage. Oh, you mean for a per, uh...
For a septic tank.
Septics five hundred, your well.
We're talking about a health department.
Well, it's three seventy-five.
Well, this, this has got community water, but I just maybe it, uh, you know, and that's...
Well, that's what it is in debt, yeah. Eighty dollars bedroom injected again. I know that's a wild hair, I shouldn't have thrown that in, but now I got to all...
No, no.
You need to...
I had it. So, I mean, for my customer, tell them, do they, you know, have you, if you suspend for two months, and it's, you just reinstated, or you suspend for a year and reinstated, or?
You have that for it.
Well, environmental health is either paid for by fees, property taxes, or probably don't get any state funds for that, so, if you reduce the revenue going to land, you're going to have to figure it out, figure out, still going to have to have some other money to do.
And you get, well, four thousand dollars a year for state.
Yeah, the problem is nothing.
Government would pay.
But if we know that would jump harder, Paul, I...
I, I don't know.
I mean, I've never had nobody refuse to build a house from any...
In the grand scheme of things, no. But does it offer something to the tax, you know, I don't know, it's, it's, we'll, we'll get it listed right off, we can put it this way.
All right, Jim, anything else on the revenue side? We bounced around a little bit there.
You're on the part right, we, uh, time to turn, right?
Yeah. With the sheriff this year, do you want, do you want to skip, skip over there to expenditures? And since the sheriff's took time and brought, uh, the major with him, I probably jump right here, budget, Ron.
I'd like to address Ron's question, something, if I'm not in the order, you know, he, it's about the debt service fund, and the use, and that happens in the, you know, schools and everything. That's under debt service fund revenues, that's the tab, and there's only one page there. He asked about the lottery funds. I did budget three hundred and six thousand of lottery funds, which is basically the same thing I budgeted for the current year, which is right on target. Because I think at our joint meeting a couple of months ago, you know, we, uh, we approved to draw down the lottery funds. So, Ron, I have, budgeted three hundred and six thousand, and of course, that's contingent upon what the legislators do, whether or not we get those funds. Hopefully, we'll get them certainly come on over here. That is budgeted. You were asking about the subsidy refund now, there, Ron, those two line items. Those are on Nantahala and Haula Valley, when we went out and borrowed those funds, we, uh, we had a higher taxable rate, but we get a subsidy from the federal government.
QZAB.
The QZAB and a QSCAB.
Okay.
So, that's the money we're getting from the federal government. And just to, you know, guys need to keep in mind, current budget, they cut us eight point seven percent. I have no inkling for next year. Right now, I have budgeted at a hundred percent. But just to make you aware, that six hundred and eighteen thousand that I budgeted for revenue could be reduced by eight point seven percent. If you just round it off, you're looking at about, what, sixty thousand dollars roughly, not quite, fifty-eight thousand probably. So, again, I have budgeted it fully, although we have no way of knowing. Um, but it is subject to, you know, the eight point seven percent, a higher percentage, lower percentage, you know.
And that's good with sequestration.
The sequestration, yes.
And the budget that they've adopted in Washington, there's a, there's a, there's a priority.
Right.
We don't know what they'll do after that, or they'll, or they'll go back and revise that, or continue it, or increase it, or whatever, there's no way to know what they'll do. So...
And business for the lot, for the loan?
Yeah.
It changes year to year.
But it is, I mean...
Yes. The amount you go down, right, and get subsidies for the life of the loan.
Basically, what they, they pay the payment at, at the going rate, and then, uh, they reimburse the candidate here between their rate and the rate that we pay, and that's how they get the money, and reduce that by, that percentage. The difference on, the difference on the other one is, the one that we did, we're going in Ireland, it's not based on that. We've got a zero, and without, without worrying about, we don't need, uh, sequester or anything, they don't have to take it in Ireland.
That's a whole run. So, when you reduced your rate on these two loans, did that reduce our subsidy also?
These two loans, the rate was not reduced.
That's what you did, that's what we're getting subsidy.
Exactly. Because one of these nets out to point four eight percent, and the other one, I think, that one percent.
I was netting out at one four eight percent, less than that percent.
I think nine one one.
It was different real slow, too. That's the difference from one to one rate is, and what the, the best rate is.
That's all I have, unless y'all have other questions about the, those debt service fund revenues.
Jim, let me just, when we ask any other question, we have on, on the revenue side, I need to move on to the schedule, I think that's fair, do that, I...
There's not many residential.
They're not, and we, we sort of, we, under the fire, I know what we're talking about, but your, Frank, fire rescue, all those are based on the current rate, not on, I know four of the best re increases, I mean.
These numbers are based on current rates, current collection percentages.
So, believe, believe rate the same, this is what...
This is what it is.
I'm glad you're getting that.
The E nine one one just is what it is, we get a certain allocation from the state every year. We did get a little bump from going from three fifteen to three twenty-two. And what they do is, every year, we have to haul it forward with the state, which shows them how we spend our nine one one funds, and they audit that. And then based on that, they kind of look, I think, at an average over the years, and they, um, you know, determine our annual allocation. And that one must be spent for those, you know, they're very strict, very specific, nine one one related purposes.
Back on the third, whatever special meeting.
Special meeting on there, yes.
That's, that's Thursday, you're right.
Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
Five Thursday. And they, there's four of the best re increases, if they can't put that in there, let's re-grant Under the, uh, solid waste, Jack, I don't know if you want to re-grant that, the, the franchise.
We're not recommending any, Chris is not recommending any change in the fee schedule, but, uh, is recommended that we go ahead and take up that issue, uh, about our franchise and solid waste, and we're going to get into a board discussion about that later down, but right now, we're, we're one of the counties that has the proposed franchise, the solid waste was allowed to handle measures, actually set your fees and so forth. And, um, some counties, they have a lot of different haulers, and so, competition sets that big. It's much simpler in our county, and a lot of counties are operating this way, to deal with one hauler, and so, does not. And, uh, but Chris is right to do, and our recommendation as well, that's worth looking at, we sit in the current franchise agreement, and the current place, but when you get into the solid waste budget, we like to talk about that more, that's made, Chris, I mean, gives It's much simpler in our county, and a lot of counties are operating this way, to deal with one hauler, because it does not, and, uh, but, Chris, your recommendation, and our recommendation as well, that's where we're looking to set up a current franchise, it's very, it's very expensive, but when you get into solid waste budget, we like to talk about that more, that's Chris, I mean, gives more information.
Of the shoot, Jim did come back and ask for one, uh, I mean, her, her current contract don't end until, when?
Well, she had a five-year contract, and I have to look up and see when it runs out, I think there's another, another couple of years left on it, uh, before.
She was asking for.
She was asking for an extension.
Way on out into.
She was asking for an additional, up to five more years, and, um, I think she was asking at her, in her justification, was that she had to replace, uh, clutch and so forth, she had to hit a five-year repayment window, and make some more, make it financially, or do that. Uh, and it's up to the board to grant, whatever terms you want to grant, or how many years you want the franchise to run, but I guess looking at it from the business side, investments you put in, and you're repaying on that, you've got to have a certain amount of time to realize that, and that's where, that's where, where gold was.
And they do a great job, and I'm not pushing that, I just said that's a long, you know, five-year window's a long time to, I don't know if any, any agreement, you would, for five years, to have a five-year way out there, because if you don't know what could happen, that's, that's just seem like a long time, but I don't remember it being that long.
One of the reasons I think there was some concern about it before was, it was five years on top of what was already left, so.
That's right.
More than five.
It's like eight or nine.
Yeah, so, five years is not unusual for a solid waste thing, but eight or nine is probably more than, than what you would want.
So you'll know exactly when that, when, when this one is due?
Yeah, we'll have the information when we get rid of, about the solid waste, but solid waste, but it's a separate standalone enterprise fund, it's self-supporting, we don't, we don't put any tax money into it, it's all generated, the fees that are charged.
That's right. And if we have anybody that wants to bid on that, or in the county wants to bid on it, or, you know, we want to make it for everybody to have an opportunity, if, if they can, I don't know if anybody that can do what, because I really don't.
Well, I've dealt with smaller companies, and I've dealt with some large ones, and, uh, I'm not saying this to put in a plug for Mrs. Hampshire, but they could really do a good job.
They do that, no doubt, right? They just seem like nine years ago, huh?
Yeah, I think that was a hangup, that it was more than five, it was actually going up here beyond five.
Can we, I mean, like, sheriff this year, in case, we just want to talk about his budget, who else do we need, when we're gonna do fire departments, Thursday night, who else, are there some specific, we don't want to have long time to take, and we don't want to be a waste of time.
As I said up front, I think we've done good for this and that, is there anybody that you won't hear Thursday night beside the fire department?
I think so, I do, yeah. I mean, we did more than one.
Oh, yeah.
I think the fire department's gonna take a little while, how long, how long you should stay here?
No, I was just saying, Thursday night, since we have the fire department here, we ought to do EMS at the same time, because they kind of go hand in hand. But that's okay.
Yeah, it is, but I think the fire department's gonna take quite, quite a bit of time.
It will, but that's four. Well, we really only need to do four here.
That's, that's.
But if you ever get into detail, I mean, I think everybody's got the fire department budget.
Yeah, we all want to do another topic, we just.
Yeah, I mean, if you. So do we need, with, with, you know, folks to come, the department head, whatever, if you need somebody here, uh, do we know that, we don't, you know, are we going to live in an hour and a half? I mean, it's, it's, it's hour and a half now.
Two and a half, hour and a half, yeah, I said, let's, we have to go about two hours.
So, we got twenty-five more minutes, so.
That's what you're, that's what you're.
I don't.
I guess, I guess what I'd like to find out, if Sheriff, if I could, is our particular areas of the budget.
Right.
Not necessarily people or whatever, different areas of the budget, if you feel like we need a lot more information on, and we get department heads, or whoever y'all need to come and give you more detail about that, so if there's an area that you want to look at closer, we can.
But obviously, schools, schools and fire departments, we already got them, so. Do you think Thursday night, anything other than that on the expenditure side that you won't hear? Human resources, sheriff's department. And if not, we can just, we can just go full and have questions about them, but just understand that, that we'll base some information, what Jack and Lori, we can tell is not necessarily part of the question.
I mean, where we want to get into it tonight, if we're not going to be injured, but like, on the sheriff's department, it says, uh, the sheriff's department, uh, not necessarily had, but there, there are a few things we'd like to address in the budget, and make clear, but maybe not so clear, you know, as, as to the expenditure side, uh, as to how many deputies they really are, and how many, you know, how big departments, this, uh, and these things we need to address, because it is, it is a big hunt, but, and I think that's why the sheriff and the major here tonight.
Your place is ready.
But if, but if we're not prepared to do that, yeah.
I'll let my group, I'll be there, my group.
But I mean, if we're not prepared to do that, that's fine, but if we're gonna be able to do it on Thursday night, I think that the fire department's thing will probably take, I'd say you could easily, what, thirty minutes each, uh, Jimmy?
I don't think, because I don't.
Well, at the end, if that's a hope.
Part of it's gonna be, part of it's gonna be, I'm sure, the justification of why they need a tax increase, the ones who ask for tax increase, and some of them may be more detailed than others, as to why they're looking for a tax increase.
But they can still, I agree somewhere, I think, we need to be.
By the way, the forums, I mean, for those that are on this board, I didn't see these forums that we had this year compared to when it, they would all come in, it's totally different. I would, I don't know if they, I mean, you had to sort of put it together, Paul, if this makes it, well, at least you can read.
Yeah.
You can see what money's there, and what, what money they do have in, in the fund, in the general funds, and.
So, so Thursday night, we're gonna do the fire departments, and it's gonna take roughly an hour, uh, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to address.
Sure.
Chairman, uh.
EMS.
EMS is gonna be, well, the EMS, it'll be EMS dispatch, uh, fire marshal addressing, there's, there's four different areas in that, so you probably want to.
Because they go hand in hand with the fire department, and there'll be, there could be questions around the fire departments, that, you know, we don't need to go through the.
Last year, we had one fire department ask for more money, and we all came here, and we all sat here, and lasted forever, and never got the news, and now you're gonna have four.
Yeah, I think it's gonna take us.
Last year, last year, we had, we had six request increases last year, and we had six.
Yeah, we had one come to speak, didn't we?
No, no, they all spoke, we didn't take long, last year, I mean, these are more detailed, and they've done a much better job of, of, upfront, we realized that last year, don't you think?
I think they'll speak the process, I think it'll speak the process of.
Well, listen, why don't we do, we'll, we'll do the fire departments, we have them coming, and I agree with the question, take EMS and all that, go as hand in hand, and if we, if we limit that amount of time.
Let's do, well, you're saying let's do the fire department, emergency services, all emergency services, not just EMS.
Right. I think so, and anything else?
Well, do you want to just schedule this sheriff's big, you know, just schedule his at five thirty, and limit, and limit, right about, like, thirty minutes is mine?
Nothing goes before me, nothing, I've got, I'll leave.
So you're okay to come Thursday night?
I'll, absolutely.
And if we run out of time, we run out of time.
The only thing I'm saying, let's, let's do it all public safety stuff in one lead.
Whatever.
That would take.
Sheriff, the EMS, if all the public, that's a big judgment. Let me ask, Sheriff, how long will it take you to pay for what you want to do?
I, I don't have much to say, you, it's up to you all, that have, you've had my book a month, so whatever you all came up with.
I think we didn't have any questions, we have, but.
That's what I'm saying.
We just say we're all forward, ready to do it, I don't think we say anything. Right, right.
I've only got one, I've only got one issue. I'm not trying to run out of time, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not here.
Well, I mean, like, Paul, I haven't booked, if you've not had time to relax, Robbie has always submitted, the sheriff has always submitted, a detailed budget that's easy to read, and I think all of it is on the top of that book, so it's just, I, I think it'd be good, I'm glad you get it to read, I think you make, and you're gonna have to, well, you need to sort of get it back when you might, after, after you read that, two or three nights, you'll, you'll know, of course, I don't, so.
Let's just, let's just do that, I don't think Robbie wants an hour of time, we've, we've had this budget, we've had time to review.
No, I don't want an hour.
Well, you got Robbie.
Well, five was.
Kind of matters for both. Yeah, that's, that's where you.
They're not exactly, you won't be surprised, they're not exactly alike.
They're not exactly alike.
What's that?
Your budget, when you proposed on what deck.
Absolutely, definitely not alike.
Not exactly alike.
And we have no problem with what he's presented, either.
Of course, and I'm not saying it's because the sheriff and the chief deputy are here, but making counties very fortunate to have the sheriff who puts together not only an operation, but a budget that really makes sense.
And we work very hard.
So you do.
That's what I say, we do, all the public safety stuff we'll do on, on Thursday night, it's about a limited time to make sure we get, you hear everybody.
And I'll go after everybody else.
That's fine. Gentlemen, all minds are clear on the revenue side, we'll agree that we've moved past that, and we'll move expenditures out.
So I'm gonna let the next rendezvous begin at.
Thursday at five thirty, we'll stand in the six. Five, rest, thanks for your frank, you're gonna do a good job.